All right, 7:01 with the votes.
7:01?
We're going to our regular Gackel City Council meeting Monday, April 14th, 2025. Everyone had their minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions, additions to those? If not, we'll take a motion to approve those. So move. Second?
A second.
All in favor? Anyone have anything to add to tonight's agenda?
Oh, the senior senator had a question on making a handicap. Cutting the curb.
New business?
Then ordinance, the attorney on the ordinances. And this would be more pertaining to Bill, but the care center, curb stop.
Okay, anything else, guys? If not, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second?
A second.
We're all looking at somebody!
All in favor?
Aye.
I know Daniel Schwartz is coming tonight. Last I talked to him, he was, so we'll just move on. We can always circle back to him when he gets here. Bill, is he...
He was gonna be here at 7, but he just wasn't gonna make it for this first meeting.
They, um... I know he said he maybe wouldn't be here. He had a game.
Ah, okay.
In Medina, but they thought it would cancel it, but... He didn't leave a list on his schedule.
That would be a little chilly for baseball, I'm assuming that. Well, we can always circle back if he gets here too, I guess, with him.
I know the one thing he was telling me that he... Our water bills, our water samples that we mail out of the post office, we would mail them and they cost us $9.67. They don't get there in time. Then they send a thing telling him, "We gotta do a new one." It's never any valid. They will give us back the $9.60 from the bank, but he's gone out two or three times to do it. Well, now there is, um... They've got new people at that office, so they weren't charging him any late fees when they had to do that, that didn't make it. The new person said she has to start charging him. So he is now, it's going to go, he's going to first whatever class or whatever. It'll be $30 to mailers, uh, samples packed up, two of these, done once a month. Instead of $9.67. Gotcha. There's no choice because if we get a late fee...
No option?
Yeah, it's an option. Because if you get late fees and all that, then you're...
He didn't have anything on it that he saw?
I didn't see anything.
Well, we can go to the auditor, then he shows up.
Yeah, why don't we? Because he talked to H&amp;H Coating, I remember that, about that paint peel within the water tower, but I don't know what the details are.
I know we had the estimate for the gutters going around.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And then, um...
Paint orders fixed, did he?
Oh, another thing was, let's put it under new business. CDL licensing.
Okay, auditor, what do you have for us?
Only thing I have is the WSI, we were fortunate enough to be able to do a, and have to do an audit for, just for 2024. I talked to her today. She was really nice. She was really nice. I told her I'd like to learn something from her, make sure I'm doing everything right, and she was all excited with me. So she'll be here May 1st. And I'll just have everything laid out on the desk where she told me exactly what she wanted to see and...
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Water sewer policing grant, do you have any?
I'm not.
Jeff, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Streets behind you, any lights or anything, so? Larry, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
No.
Were we supposed to... We're just coming up here, so...
That's coming up.
Okay. We got any discussion on old business we need to do? First reading on flood ordinance was done, permits were doing Nelson, approved. Pister storage shed, eight by 20 on concrete, water tower bill. Yeah, I guess, hopefully Kenzie can update us on that. New business. Second ordinance reading. I hope you kept one. I didn't think about bringing... I forgot we were doing that this meeting. And I just read the same thing as last time, that's all he wanted us to do again. Down to the definitions, okay? Well, we'll try and breeze through that as quick as I can here. This is for flood fighting management, section 1.0, statutory authorization, findings of fact, purpose, and objective. The legislature of the state of North Dakota has in North Dakota Centric Code, chapters 40 through 47, 11 through 33, 58, dash, 03, delegate your responsibility to local government units to adopt regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens, read. Therefore, the city of Gack... What am I supposed to say here? Gackel City Council of Gackel, I guess, North Dakota does ordain as follows. The flood hazard areas of Gackel are subject to periodic inundation, which can endanger life, result in loss of property, create health and safety hazards, disrupt commerce and governmental services, cause extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection, relief, and impair the tax base, all of which adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare. Two flood losses caused by cumulative effect of obstructions in the special flood areas cause increases in flood heights and velocities. Inadequately flood-proofed, elevated, or otherwise unprotected structures also contribute to the flood loss. Statement of purpose is the purpose of this ordinance to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare and to minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions in specific areas by provisions designed to protect human life and health, to minimize expenditure of public money for costly flood control projects, to minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding and general undertaken at the expense of general public, to minimize prolonged business interruptions, to minimize damage to public facilities and utilities such as water and gas, means electric, telephone, and sewer lines, streets, and bridges located in special flood hazard areas, to help maintain a stable tax base by providing for the second use and development of special flood hazard areas so as to minimize future flood, blight areas, to ensure that potential buyers are notified that property is in a special flood hazard area, to ensure that those who occupy the special flood hazard area assume responsibility for their actions. Methods of reducing flood losses. In order to accomplish its purposes, this ordinance includes methods and provisions for restricting or prohibiting uses which are dangerous to health, safety, and property due to water or erosion hazards or which result in damaging increases in erosion or in flood heights or velocities. Requiring that uses vulnerable to floods, including facilities which serve such uses, be protected against flood damage at the time of initial construction. Controlling the alteration of natural floodplains, stream channels, and natural protective barriers which help accommodate or channel floodwaters. Controlling filling, grading, dredging, and other development which may increase flood damage and preventing or regulating the construction of flood barriers which will unnaturally divert floodwaters or which may increase flood hazards in other areas. Do we need a motion to approve that then?
Yep.
Okay, take a motion on that?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should take care of that.
Now, with the new ordinances, this is something, you know, Lauren and I, we keep looking in that book, and he knows that you guys changed the ordinance, and we keep looking and looking, and you gotta go back to the minutes. I've decided from this day on, you guys have all your own books. I am going to make up a sheet that you will attach in your book, the added ordinance, to attach right in your book, and I'll attach it right in ours, so we no longer have to go back looking at minutes. So this one here, I'll give you a new thing for flood, for flood. But any one that we change, I'm gonna make it, so we ought to, I automatically, we should put them in the ordinance book. So you don't have to look back in any books.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. Daniel Schwartz is in here for the generator. Um, I put the Easter egg hunt on here. It's the Streeter one. A few of the ladies that put that on said there's quite a few Gackel kids that come to that and wondering if the city of Gackel would be interested in donating any money to help out. I said, "Sure, bring it up." I know it's, they just had it last weekend. We're late this year, but just moving forward, getting in on it.
Do you people have...
I don't... We haven't done any yet, but I...
They don't have kids from here that come.
50 to 100 bucks is what they're, you know... Whatever you guys think. I mean, it's really neat. I guess they had quite a few kids again this year, so...
There's quite a few kids. I would, um, I don't see why not.
I recommend 100. 100, okay. Okay, and that way for next year, we can just get the check to them. Don't have to... It's my fault. I didn't even know about it last meeting, so, okay? Uh, let McKenzie know that then. Uh, new business of Brett Johnson house.
That one there, we put on, um, she is willing to give the city that property.
She is?
Yes, she, for free. So we have to take the house down and probably sell it because the house isn't worth anything, but right now, we're gonna have to go mow it. We had to put that new curb stop, wanted to turn the water off just in case the pipes froze this past winter. But she will not, the bill is in Brett's name, the house is in the mother's name. The only thing I did was send the bill to her because she promised her mother Brett would always have his bills paid there. But she said, "Do not send me another bill." She's not paying any taxes, any, anything. So we can wait three years and get it back, or say, she can give it to us now, and we can, we're gonna have to mow it all three years anyway, if we wait, but we aren't gonna be able to charge anybody for it.
Has any of the paperwork and the transfer been started, do you know?
In the what?
For transferring them?
No, she talked to me and she said she will give it to the city. We just have to pay, yeah, we're gonna have to, she's not putting another dime towards that place. So it can sit there for three years on Main Street and look like that, or we can take it.
Is that that brown house on Main?
Yeah. That's a, you know, one that looks like...
One thing I, I guess I'll bring up on that one is, is that I, we should almost find out if there's that grant money for tearing these places down. I mean, it's pretty easy to just say, "Hey, take it. I'm not paying a dime on it." But at the same time, I agree at all with the house sitting there either looking like that.
Wouldn't you need a health department to come and tell you that? Well, if she gives it to the city, the city can do what they want with it, right?
I know what it's gonna cost us, another 10 grand to tear it down and try and sell it.
The assessment... The assessment or estimate was six.
Six, okay.
But as far as the grant, the way it's on it, oh, there's strings attached.
It's only free.
If it's not 100%.
Couldn't you put it up for sale with that? One, it has, will have a lot of electricity. You won't have a hot work. You could try to... No, you don't want the house standing there. You wanna take that down. So nobody leaves it up like that.
What's this?
I was gonna say, couldn't you turn around and put the property up for sale for 6,000? That's a Main Street thing, don't, were people asking us if we had lots for sale?
Yeah, after it's done, if they... In some ways, it's better maybe to take it down as long as it's on Johnson's name.
Yeah, that's...
Well, you know, you know her. I can call her.
As soon as the city owns anything like that, we're gonna run into some...
Yeah.
I'm sure she will. She's, she's, she knows Drew and I, so, I mean, I talked to, she's the one who called me and talked to me and shared, "I'm not paying that."
We should ask the local guy. There's a local guy with an excavator, and I just understand, he just picked up the contract, his license. Maybe he'd do it for less.
And I'm sure she, she asked about taking it down, and then she was gonna take it down herself, but she can't afford it.
Yeah, as soon as that's in city name, then we're gonna run into some different stuff there.
Then she'll do the abatement.
Well, maybe we should table this until next meeting. Let's stage stuff, is that okay then?
I'll do a little more research on it.
Or what's your guys'?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I think just stick another six grand into it, another property, eat the assessments. Okay, whole table that then until next meeting. Um, I was asked about city cleanup, and maybe I forgot. Did we talk about that after you guys, remember? Could we pick a heat out for that? I don't know, when did we do it last year? I mean, is that me usually?
So let Bill tell you. Bill could have told you. He did become...
Then we're gonna be done here, so... Okay. Um, I guess if you guys don't have a date in mind or really know, we could just figure out what works for Bill and Tom and put, get the word out there. I guess we don't really have to make a motion or nothing.
Well, we can put it out in paper and then put things, put it on doors like I did here.
Perfect, okay.
Let's go back to the demolition. I understand right now, I think the old clinic building is gonna get demolished. The hardware store, he did give an estimate for taking it down, but in the meantime, there's basically two people that are really feel it should be renovated for historical value. They hired an architect. She's coming on Friday, and I gotta hoist her up to see the roof. And, um... I don't know. So I, I, what I told the owner, Joe Davis, well, he's coming the first week in April. And what I'm gonna tell him...
In May.
Or in May, May. It's either gonna be yes or no, so I can let Ninos know. So they don't turn down work thinking they got that to take out. And they won't renovate or rebuild. I don't know. I think maybe a lot of you have not seen the pictures, but everything's coming down. The front part, the roof's coming down. It's taken the floor or the ceiling of the main hardware store down with it. You can look right outside, and it's taken the floor of the hardware store down with it. It's all rotted. The back is totally caved in, the apartment part. And if you're standing in that lower level near the, uh, west end, you can see how the tin is bowed. So I don't know how rotted that is. But when you're up on the roof, you can see holes all over the place. So...
Wish them luck. It's, it's a great idea, but it might be a little too far down for that.
I'm afraid. But I'm not the one that owns it.
Right.
And I'm not gonna make, you know, that's Joe Davis's call. But we're not gonna fool around all summer with our manhood.
Anything else on that, Lauren?
Nope.
Any questions? Um, I had gotten a message from Tammy Koenig, and there was some grass ripped up in her yard. Um, a few spots. I went and looked at it. I mean, it's not terrible, but I understand being upset. I, I told her that it's, you know, it was an accident.
And we all have it.
We all have it. It's tough pushing snow, especially on those hills, but she said we didn't wanna agree to cleaning anything up or fixing it, then we're not supposed to push anymore through her yard or onto her yard or something anymore moving forward. So I said I would bring it up to you guys. Uh, what your thoughts are, what you guys wanna do there.
Is it right next to the curb then?
It's the steep part going up is what I saw. I don't think they actually pushed it back through the driveway, do they?
That I know of.
I think it's just where her steps are in front with that steep. That's all I saw. I don't know. We could take some black dirt down, I guess. Let's see. I don't know, but then there's...
Is it a big area then?
It looks like it was the big blade, I guess, that he must have maybe tried to wing it up there or something to get it off the street, but... I don't know. I said I'd bring it to you guys. That's, don't accidents happen. We're trying to see what you guys think on that, but...
Well, I would say maybe we'll take a look at it, and if nothing else, we probably could just get a bucket of dirt and shovel it in the pit. I don't know, if it's sog, we'll just peel it back, you know? I don't, I've never seen it. I don't know.
It has ruts or a scrape or, like, is it matter just going to hit it with a rock rake and throw in some seed down?
I think what I did, I did that yesterday, is pull it back. You're, you know, you're gonna have it every year. I mean, it just happens, you know, so... It's just, you, you pull the saw it back, nine times out of 10, the saw is there with it. You just pull the saw back over the top and then sprinkle a little seed in it.
That's what I gotta go out to.
You know, so, I mean, as far as our responsibility to do that?
I don't know either.
Probably rather raise an argument, you know, probably an hour's job. I just don't know. I haven't never paid attention.
I'll just try and maybe mention it to Bill and see if he just... Say an argument.
Just have him run around and try to fix it what he can see, you know, I mean, it ain't gonna, nothing ain't gonna take much work.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to us, you know, maybe we put or something up. It's not like we were, you know, malicious about it, but trying to fix it.
But it probably would take, you know, have a guy go spend an hour doing it, and it's probably justified, I hope, so...
Can you fix the ones I did at the school too for me?
Right.
Because I don't have...
I've done it too, you know.
Cause I noticed another one somewhere. Getting somewhere.
Last snow, everything was so soft.
That's right. I would recommend just one.
Just in time, Bill. You're in the hot seat.
You're gonna start the meeting without it?
Did you get him to get canceled then?
Huh?
Did you get him to get canceled? You know, it's cold up there.
Yeah. A little cold, you swing it back.
We should just, we'll just go back to you then, whatever you got for us then when you're ready.
Okay. I guess I'll start off with this. Gutter proposal. I got one from Clinder, one from Infinitys right there. Once you guys see the bins, I guess you need to decide on what you guys wanna do. It's about $8 difference or maybe?
What'd you say, Clinder or No?
Infinity.
And this is, sorry, I was just asking, is it all the way around or what were we doing again?
Yep. And just quickly glancing at it, it looks like same, same bins, downspouts and the whole thing. Well, when John looked at it the first time, all he did was measure the front. He didn't even go, go in the back and look at what was in the back.
Okay.
So that's why he was so old the last time. Um, this little section here on the east side is gonna have downspout on this at the south end, and it's gonna run pretty much the whole length of the building. And kick it out, you know, out here by the sidewalks somewhere to get it out of the way from the building. Okay, so, other than that, there's gonna be downspout here, or two on the, on the front, and one over on that side going to the north. To get it, get it out of the way from the building. I don't wanna get decent heavy rains. This corner over here gets damp.
It doesn't?
Yeah. And there is one that goes about halfway while you're sitting there, Drew. But I was like, "Get it out far enough." I mean, it's just, you know, coming to the building here somewhere.
It's kind of a weird hill back here.
And it's that little room there that probably gets so hard.
John didn't include the removal?
Correct. I, it didn't look like it.
It didn't look like it.
It didn't look like it.
Right.
So, Tom and I could remove that.
All.
That's the only thing doing there. That's just a few screws we pull out and they'll come down.
Okay.
Uh, down rorix, when we had that water break, it was about 31,000 gallons that went through that meter. You know, it was in a hunter house. Talked to H&amp;H Coating on, or H&amp;H, uh, for the water tower. There isn't really a warranty on that. He was pretty disappointed that that was the one. The paint was starting to peel. He said if he's down here in the area, he'll take a look at it. But he said the best bet, well, for him to order a gallon of that, it'd be pretty expensive. He said if you could just go into Sherwin-Williams and try and match that color, or if they can kind of match or get it close, because the color that he'll order, he'd have to more or less repaint the whole tower. Because it wouldn't match, he said.
You know, all you gotta do is take a flake in there and then you...
Yeah. I, Tom and I looked around the building here. When we cleaned it up the first time, I think we threw all that away.
Okay.
So I'll have to crawl up there and try to find another one. See if I can scrape the piece off or whatever.
When was that painted again? Did he...
That was before I started.
A year before I started too.
It was banned before 18, so...
Boy, it's been that long?
It has. It's been, I think it was 15, 16, something like that.
I'm pretty sure it happened not long after I moved here, and I moved here in 13.
Yeah.
10 years old.
Seems like yesterday.
Yeah. I remember the, well, the area below the tower was full of, that pit. You know, that's what, eight feet deep?
The one back here?
Yeah.
Well, I would say all eight, yeah.
God, you know, we worked our butts off. I had the hydro back, and we kept agitating with water. It was all full of dirt and chunks of wood and... Boy, that is, that long ago.
What you guys thought on the, yeah, so I don't forget that. How's the estimate?
Oh, on the estimate?
Yep.
How soon do you want it to start?
Any preference or?
I don't really have the preference. I, I, I might support my local, uh, help if you can, but, I mean, I mean, whatever. I don't care. I, I'd go either way, whatever everybody wanna do, so...
You know, it's $837 JDK. It's cheaper. A problem I had is no one to do sloppy work.
No. It's one seamless and the other not, because that's...
He does have a seamless, right?
He does.
And I agree with you. You like to keep the work local.
Yeah.
You know, I'm kind of in the same mind.
Yeah.
I think, I think...
Just to keep it local.
I think, I think if you did that and that little aspect of what he's doing there, and have someone watch it, you know, make sure we're happy as long as he does and, and all good.
I think so. Okay. Take a motion to approve, um, of JDKs.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
City Weed Eater kinda went down. Well, it went down last year. It didn't run very good.
Was that Tom?
Just, I just...
It'd be hard to find a new one.
Uh, I took carburetor off and cleaned it twice. Here, tried looking at it. He said more or less needs a new carburetor. And what he said there on eBay, he said he can get $25, $30. My question is, do we wanna go that route, or do we want to go and buy a battery-operated one?
Oh. Do you ever think about how old that thing is?
How old it is?
Yeah.
That's been a exciting, you know, how they're going to do.
Did you have a price, like?
A new one with, right now, Steel's got a thing going on right now. If you buy a Weed Eater, um, you get an extra battery with it. Heard of them.
What are they, $24?
Yeah.
Don't go to D-Walk.
The Weed Eater would be about 400, 400 to 500.
We made that mistake. Stay away from D-Walk when it comes to Weed Eaters, but...
I just found this deal, just 'cause running's...
We did just steal, and we do all of them, so we have quite a few batteries that you use now.
Yeah, all in favor? Corless is the way to go.
And we're not mixing gas, some of the gas is old, so we're dumping a little gas in there.
Yeah, we could give them a Corless as well. We run the Keats, we went the 40 volt. But they're spanned here by 8 volt. What are you getting a steel for?
Huh?
How much in a steel?
I, I just kind of right looked through at running's quick and maybe we're from 5 to 800 bucks, whatever. How big one do you want?
Just keep your batteries warm.
I'm saying good.
Yeah, keep your batteries in. Because your battery's gonna be behind the prices, you know, it's very, very good. I don't know if you'd wanna give me a a price set, you know, on that stuff, or just go get one, or?
I would say just go get one.
Go get you one. Is this something you're gonna just use here? You're gonna want it to... Is this something you're gonna just use here, you're gonna monitor the park board or any of that stuff?
No, I mean, it's about here.
You don't have a big, like?
City Hall, Tom Mo's, the fire department, that wellhouse down there.
Yeah.
What voltage do you have there?
I'm pretty sure they're pointing. I guess I didn't really pay that much attention to them, but if that's the size you want to get, then that's, if that'd be.
For how long can you use it and stuff?
Cordless will be good.
Okay, ours is twenty or twenty-four, and within a year and a half, it's junk, no?
Really?
Yeah, we've got a D-Wall one at work, and then the unit is fine, but like the, the trimmer head, like the string attachment, that thing's junk on the, on the D-Wall one. But the unit itself works great.
Does the one for the cemetery still work good? You know, cause that's that brand, and, and that one, which wasn't that, I mean, it was like three hundred bucks, four hundred bucks.
Yeah, whatever you think, Bill, it's almost.
Just shopping around those, if there's anything that's like, like more than what you're saying there, the five hundred, that's small. But anywhere in between there sounds okay to me.
Yep. Um, I think everybody knows about, paylord went down, this last snowstorm. Had Butler come out, but they gave me an estimate, and they came out and fixed it, but this was the price that they gave me. And then ECM unit actually did not go out, so they did not have to replace that, so that saved us about thirty-five hundred bucks there. Roughly around two thousand, I just called them, go ahead and send it out, and we'll get it fixed there. We were talking about putting an insurance claim on that, when it was just a six thousand.
Is this what you called me on earlier?
Yeah, and then, I was just talking a little bit more about it, I told Derek, just to get around that insurance claim, so he just paid for it.
I would think so, one or two thousand dollars, it's not.
I think it's already doubtful.
Hundred bucks.
Is it a hundred? Then hold jacket premium, well, that's just a, you know, it's, yeah.
Um, with more engineering down here, last, who was that, who was it? Went around and finished some of the houses that didn't do that first round of letting copper stuff, we were able to get into a lot of the houses, so. There's still maybe one, ten houses that we weren't able to get into.
That's tough during the day like that, isn't it, you still have to run around the street or?
And then, we got hunter houses, thankfully, like Sherry took care of that one down there, where you get in there, and then Greg Ellis had a couple of them that we could get into, so.
Good.
So, we're getting closer on next step, I have no idea what the next step, they didn't even know what the next step was.
That's Interstate, didn't you ever talk to them a little bit? Waste of time.
Yeah, that's how I feel it is right now. You know? Um, school, we're gonna put a new meter in at the school. When they do the meter, we're gonna do the backflow there too, right away, to get that in, put that boiler system up there.
Good.
Um, school paid for the, the, uh, backflow, city paid for the meter, and that'll be a radio read out one, too, if you want to go in to read it. And that's one of the ones, I don't remember, remember when they were here, before we bought them here, it's a block ten, they call it, so that has a better idea on how much low flow there is, you know, just a, it's a quick little wash hands, it'll detect that a lot easier than these old meters do, as far as gallons usage.
Okay.
So, probably a little bit more expensive, but he said that it's what a lot of these people, tunnels are doing, they're going to these block tens, when they got a bigger two inch line like that.
Okay.
Um, D-Walls, I call D-Walls about getting, at the care center here, about getting that curb stock replaced, and the fire protection system outside the gate valve does not work at all. So, I got them on the list, care center's doing some work there, I understand that there's steps inside the front sidewalk, so that's kind of why we decided to do it now. So, we don't have to dig up that sidewalk, or something, go bad there.
That was about a year ago, when they had to replace the main valve inside, and we couldn't shut the.
For the fire.
The curbs, for the fire protections, and we couldn't shut the curb stuff down, so we had to shut that hole, or the two blocks, three?
That would've been about two of the, yeah, two blocks.
So, being there, S and S is doing the concrete work out front, I think we should put that curb stuff in, get it working properly.
Absolutely.
And then we got one other gate valve, um, by the bank, that was a major gate valve, that we have, that we bought to do it, and we just never got time to do it last year, so we're gonna get that one done too. It works, but it takes both Tom and I on the wrench to get it turned on, so.
And the trouble is, is that six inch plate, it's, I think it's a six inch, you know, that rupture would have, would, we'd be out of water in a short order. If it had a bad rupture to it, we would have no way to shut it off, and that was put in, I would suspect, between, um, either forty-nine or nineteen seventy-one, I'm not sure.
Did you say forty-nine?
Yeah.
Don't worry, I don't remember it being put in. I'm just one year old.
The dumpster for the freeze is, I mean, I have a cold, is that Troy's building, that's, he, Troy's building got sold over here? So, we're going to just take that dumpster back and just clean out the freeze.
Okay.
So, it is true that they, he sold it.
Uh, that's, that's just what I've heard.
Troy told me, he took it, or he's gonna buy it, but Troy has not seen any money.
So, we'll just kind of wait with that, we'll get to it for a little bit.
Okay.
And Tom and I did, we did have one care center dumpster, it's just, just the bottom was, rotted out on it, so we cut all that out and replaced the bottom. Put the bottom in it, so we do have an extra good one, if we, we do need, don't have no lids on it, but, I mean, we could get lids if we needed to.
Okay.
But it's nice to have an extra bigger one like that, just for people cleaning the basements out and, like that. I guess, my water sample has not been showing up in Fargo, sometimes I gotta do it three times a month, something to do with the postage, so. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pay for that extra overnight shipping, it's gonna jump from nine dollars up to thirty dollars a month. Just, I'm getting tired of doing water samples three times a month, when it should, should be there. So, now that's that, um. Talk about, a little bit about our CDLs, I guess, um. So, I made last Friday, I made an appointment to do it, to go get a permit for tomorrow, and the lady said, do you know, are you new to the system? I'm like, yes, I mean, I've never done anything like this before. She goes, well, you do know you have to take classes to do this. I was like, no, and what I was told is that the class B, you don't have to do take classes. She goes, no, you have to take these classes now for a class A and class B CDO.
Before you can even take your permit test?
No, you can take the permit.
You have to have your permit first.
Yeah, you have to have your permit first, go do these classes, do your eighty hours of driving, then go to James Town and do that pre-trip lockdown stuff, and then you got your air brakes on top of it yet. So, uh, it's up to you guys, if you want us to do it, classes, I looked into it a little bit, Bismarck puts one on for sixty-five hundred dollars, that's a person. And Dickens and State puts one on for sixty-eight hundred, I think it was. And I don't know if there's an online course, you know, I guess I didn't look that far into, I don't know if there is or not.
There is, yeah.
Is it? There is, I think Anthony took his online stuff, did he?
And that other one, the classes, they're like, what did you think, you did like, it's like four days a week for two or three weeks, it's a.
Ask Anthony how he did his, he did his online.
But you do your eighty hours of driving, everything's in there.
Oh, everything is in the, in that class.
In the class, yeah, when you come out, you're pretty much ready to go.
Oh, okay.
They do everything with you there, is what I was told.
Okay, so, I don't know if that's something you guys want us to do, or do we wanna go a different route, from getting rid of the truck?
You know, I wonder if we just have Bill. Cause I, I'll just say this, I called Bismarck the other day, it's a section, it says, uh, driver's license information. And that's the trouble, we get so many different opinions, cause I talked to a lady by the name of Teresa, and she says, well, if you're going for the class B, there's a certified tester at Napoye. And she gave me his telephone number, so I called the guy, and he says, yeah, I says, I can certify it for class B. But, he said, I can't do air brakes, he does all the, he does schools evidently, but your hydraulic brakes. So, I don't know what the true information is, but maybe, something to wonder, but, what scares me about going like with Gainer sanitation, or Dakota sanitation, or, I think there's a new one, isn't there? That Streeter's got.
Yeah, but I can't remember the name of it now, I paid the stu-, no, I just paid the city of Streeter, that's why. I know Waste Management comes down to Streeter. Cause they all have Big Apple, oh, no. But just now we went through that, for some reason, we're right in the middle of nowhere or something.
So, I don't know, do we wanna research that avenue just for our own information, and then make a decision?
I'd say we get some estimates and just entertain it and see what it's.
I agree. I agree, find out companies that will come here, give us an idea of how much it's gonna cost us per month. Do they provide the cans, you know, this, that? And let's entertain it before we dump, you know, seven, eight thousand dollars on having to have it.
That's for one person.
Yeah, yes, exactly right.
And that's, that's one thing that's got from Napoye, it said, that's the problem that's been arising continually. You train the guy, you spend six thousand or whatever, and then, the next company comes along and offers them ten dollars more, and then they leave, you have longevity.
Bill ain't leaving.
He signed a contract.
You already did that.
That's what I thought.
I understand that.
If we choose to stay with the truck, if we only had Bill with the CDL.
Well, I think the future would be, I'd like to entertain having somebody come and help our garbage.
I'll call that Ralph tomorrow, I just can't remember what the name of their company is, how to get in touch with.
Everybody does it with us now, and I was just curious what it, what is the. We didn't go that route because we had just put a lot of money into that. Yes, right, right. But now we gotta put money into a drive. Right, right.
I talked to my dad up in Turley, and he's, they pay, uh, was it fourteen, or sixteen fifty a month for garbage, and that's somebody coming in and doing.
Right.
Doing that, which is truly, probably twice us, I would think.
Yeah.
Well, let's get some numbers.
I, I, I agree. Who's gonna look at that, you gonna maybe look as well, or, I mean, who's looking at that?
I'll get in contact with that guy and get Bill's number, and, and have him come down, and whatever he's gotta do, look at houses or what, I don't know. Cause I think he does call too, I know there's a truck that goes through, through town here.
Yeah.
Is it Dakota something, I can't remember.
Could be Dakota, but Dakota's been coming through, so.
I don't know where, this Ralph Freeville was the one that bought this one at the Streeter, now, I know he's got some other small towns.
What are you, about two hundred bucks a week, dump fees?
No, I don't.
A week, we pay nine something a month, I mean, a month.
Yeah. There's some numbers to.
Sometimes, this one was hot, low, the low end, it was only nine, sometimes it's higher.
I move with Dale until next month.
Okay.
The CDO.
Second?
Yeah, I'll say, okay.
What else you got, Bill?
Uh, let's see.
He's got the, uh, cleanup city.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot about that.
cleanup week?
Yeah, what were you thinking on that?
Depending on the weather, I was kind of hoping it'd straighten out a little more.
I'll just let you stay in touch with, share, you guys put something in the paper and all of that.
It's gonna be later in May.
Late May, so we can talk about it next month and, okay. And then, right before you walked in, I, um, Tammy Kane, you got, uh, messaged me about a little bit of grass, that was tore up on the side hill or whatever. And we're all ingredients, we all know what happens, but can you just drive by and look and see if a little bit of black or, maybe you saw just. I know, I'm not gonna deny that, I know.
Well, that's what I was explaining, it happens to everybody's yards, every, I mean, I've done it, everybody's done it.
I've done it to my own.
Exactly. Entertain the thought of maybe look and see what, a little bit of saw you can throw back.
Yeah, I guess, if there's some other ones, I guess, if you're driving around a bucket load, I guess, just see ones, I'm not saying we gotta fix everything, but. Okay, so we'll take care of that, oh, she never got back to me, so I don't know if she, um, permit?
Get it deep or nothing?
No, I know, but it was, yeah, less than a blade cut, that's steep.
More likely isn't, yeah.
Just smooth it out with a rock, right, can throw some seed.
That's what I can, yeah.
Okay, uh, permits for Nyberg, for a deck and garden fence and front yard.
You've got his permit right there, she can see exactly what, how he's doing it, the other guys, a couple of the other guys saw it earlier, did, is that Nyberg's or is that this?
Nyberg's.
Woven wire, I don't know, like, cause his other place, he had woven wire with T poles.
Well, you make it clear, you own that.
I make it clear, I always tell them, on this thing here, they now have to tell you exactly what they're doing, what material they're using, how long, how tall they're going, everything.
So, we just have, and it's like on the corner.
He said this will be three to five, I think it's so he can put all his garden bits in somewhere, and then you won't see them.
A steel roof for page playing garden. Uh, motion to approve those two?
Sold.
Second?
All say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, vaccination clinic is scheduled for June fourth, nine to one at the city hall.
That's just information.
Okay, um, senior center, Lauren, you have any of that up there?
What about you painting city signs?
Yeah.
We should get that.
You wanna go to senior center?
Yeah, go ahead, that's fine.
They are, I had a request from Judy, um, some of the people are having trouble stepping from the street up on the curb, on the sidewalk. It's about a six inch rise, I suppose, and they were wondering if we could, if, and I guess they would pay for it, cutting out the curb and putting a handicap ramp. I don't know, you know, and then they got another four inch rise going into the senior center itself, but they said that's not the problem, it's down at the curb. You know, would we allow it?
I don't know if it was, if it's us, you know, or if it's a state issue, being forty, you know, fifty-six, I don't know.
See, I think the sidewalks are city.
I think we own, we own some up to a certain point, too, in the center of the road or whatever.
I believe it's ten feet, what I was always told is ten feet on each side for parking.
Okay.
That's the city, but the state does maintain it with their highway, but it's actually city. And the other thing is, I don't know how steep, you know, I, I'd like to leave Rick Schultz or S and S is over here, and they're gonna be doing work at the care center and lead. lead to, let them get their opinion.
I mean, I'm okay with it. That place gets busy every morning if it's
Yeah, I mean, they wanna do it then, yeah.
Then I'll just pass that word along to Judy. We'll allow it. And provided it doesn't get too steep for the
Well, the transition between the other part, you know, to make it slope, you're gonna you're gonna mess that whole part. Well, like you say, let's keep looking.
They do it. When I looked at the cleaning side of it, you know, that's the way that it does down, rolls back up again. So there is a handicap on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, I guess as long as it doesn't get too steep till it turns into a luge with the ice, you know. Come wintertime, launch your wintertime coffee and then have a rash of broken hips over the whole thing.
I, you know, I would get Rick's opinion or guys that do the concrete work, Rick and Cody or whatever.
Yeah, could we have to?
Oh, they could blend it in.
Yeah. Okay, senior center's good. We talked about the care center curb stuff. Did we need to bring up or sometime, what'd you find out by, uh, that water heater you're fixing? Do we need to get that on the list too for the
Oh, I talked to Bill. We were gonna see if the he didn't know if the curb stop turns or did you try it today?
Where?
At Gary Larson's?
Yep, we got it to turn.
Okay.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Water heater is fixed. The water heater is fixed.
Okay.
So the only thing would be that shut-off valve that's by the by the meter inside the basement you can't turn.
Right, yeah.
So
We got the gate or the valve outside to turn.
Was that, were you planning on putting a new meter in that sometime or?
We can.
Probably have to order more meters, but probably this week or whenever you decide to do the meter, change that valve valve.
Oh, that's leaking.
Not leaking?
Well, it's not leaking.
You just can't shut it off.
Oh.
On our side of the meter?
Right, it's on the line side of the meter, service side of the meter. That is, that ball valve is so tight, I broke, well, I didn't break the handle, but all I was doing was bending it.
Uh, we, it was, we were able to turn it, so I, I don't think it would be turning off, but I didn't go in the house to check or anything.
What do you decide to do? I mean, I got the water heater fixed, so there was another valve to shut off. We would've replaced, done it differently if we could've shut the main off.
Right.
But I got, the water heater's fixed, so that's, no problem there. Just the main valve can't be turned.
See, he was working below the valve of the water heater itself. And, um I was gonna, you know, that we should've fixed it if you, if Gary would have a break in the house. Somewhere else beside the water heater. He couldn't shut it off without the curb. Or unless the curb stopped.
Just build Larry then whatever that costs?
Is that it?
No.
Well, that'll be up to them anyway.
Okay. Good enough. We'll take care of that then. Um, I was asked, last year we paid for some signs to be redone and we asked them to give us another year before painting the other three. And, um, Dennis Tierar is gonna be the one doing it again. I think he does a hell of a job. Um, but they're thinking it's gonna be around eight hundred bucks a piece to redo them. Um, and there's three of them. And then I think it's Welcome to Capital signs, right? Is that what we're hearing? So, um, I just said I'd bring it up to you guys. Um, because it's the following year and what your guys' thoughts are. They'd have them done before Fourth of July for sure. Any thoughts on that?
Are they in tough shape? I can't even picture them ahead.
Something like up there between the bar. Isn't it something like that?
That's what they'll look like. Right now, they're green or green or blue or something like that.
When would they last?
I wonder if, I wonder if, um, we could put in for some of the gaming money to help us pay for it. Maybe pay half and then see if we can get gaming money for half.
It'd be worth it.
I'll call, I'll, I'll talk to Nicole and see if we can put in some gaming money for that. I mean, if we got half the money, we pay half.
When would they painted last or when would they put up?
Well, I think the main thing is to get the new logo on there and then update our cash.
Well, the thing, if they do them now, then they're gonna be fine for what do you call that? Centennial?
Centennial?
Yeah.
Well, centennial?
Yeah. That is until, what, twenty-four, twenty-nine, I think? But if they're gonna, if they've been there for a while, then that'd be no problem. I just don't
But then if he's putting on the new logo, then it'll probably just be a matter of touch up, you know, like say twenty-eight.
And it might not be.
What did we say we were gonna do?
I think that was when we paid for these flags on the thing. So you, they wanted the flags and they wanted these signs. So we totally played for the flags the one year. Give us up next year for these signs, cause we didn't wanna do both. Is what it was, wasn't it?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, I'd like to talk to Nicole tomorrow, the end of this quarter, so we can try to get it for next quarter. And she gives some, she could give us an idea. And we go from there.
I'm in favor of it, so whatever you guys think. I just, I think it's gonna be a great idea.
Yeah, it needs to be done. I don't have a problem doing it. It's gonna cost you about twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred, so.
Why don't you tell them to go ahead and then I'll
Get the ball rolling and just say, either way, we'll get covered, I guess. I agree.
Yeah, and then I'll talk to Nicole and see if we can get next, next quarter money.
Okay. Um, the only other thing we got, Lauren, you had me put down attorney on ordinances?
Yeah, I called today, you know, we gotta upgrade our ordinances and I called today Isaac Zimmerman's office. They will not do ordinances. I called Todd Mose. They are using an attorney out of Lynton for their ordinances, but God, it's an eighty mile drive. Uh, Napoleon, actually Isaac's office recommended Dulstead and Riot out of James Town. So what's the opinion? I had no idea what the cost would be.
That's not the ones you dealt with before on this, was it?
And really, maybe I'm partially to blame too. You know, she was gonna rewrite them. Then maybe man, he just kinda dropped, just never followed through.
Lauren, we have a temper.
And that was over that house up there.
I guess we gotta get him through an attorney to make sure everything's legit moving forward. So it's gonna be where it's gonna be, I guess.
Exactly. I mean, it's just the fallout of getting it done. Was Todd happy with that guy down in Miami?
I think they were. Yeah.
Well, maybe if we can give these guys in James Town a try and if it doesn't work out. I'd prefer to go to James Town myself, just cause everybody's there and we're there.
And the way it sounds to me, it I, I didn't even realize the problem till I looked in the phone book. You know, so many attorneys, they specialize in criminal law or divorce law or you know. Um and what I was told by Isaac's that doesn't mean that he can't, and I didn't ask him, but he said, that doesn't mean they can't represent us if we have ordinance issue. But they are not qualified to write them. Or, you know, rewrite them.
We better find someone that does, man.
Have you put together some that you're gonna rewrite that are in that thing? Are there some of the ordinances you're gonna rewrite that's in that sample one we have from Lisa?
Yeah, we have to go through. There's, just one example I'll give is the fire department. According to that, the city gives the guidelines to the fire department as far as chief, it's gotta have a chief, assistant chief and on down the line. And Wishings, I got a copy from Wishing. Their first sentence is very specific. Um and I just put in Gackel, but it reads like Gackel Fire Protection District. Or the City of Gackel is protected by this Gackel Fire Protection District. And everything else is omitted. It's a very simple one-liner.
You know, there's a lot of ordinances we already have that are in that book that I don't think there's gonna be too much to
Right.
For them to go through. It's, cause we just got the copy from the state, so it's just, I'm looking, I don't think it would take too much to, I wouldn't think. It's not like we wrote it. You know, we're just changing some verbiage to match our city.
And there's another one in there that really caught me, you know, like the policing. There's a chapter on policing. You know, we're under the, we contracted the Logan County Sheriff's Department. We have nothing to do with the the guidelines that the sheriffs have to follow. You know, there, I'm sure there's a guideline that they have to follow that covers the whole county. So really, why have all these pages in there? When it's very simple, you know, we contract with the Logan County Sheriff's Department. We don't have a police chief, I guess, you know.
Yeah, I say, it's hard to be able to drive, you know, that stuff.
Okay.
I recommend, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't feel comfortable driving all the way over there. And there's probably questions arriving when they're looking at them.
All right. Um everyone had a chance to look at the bills for tonight then? Any questions on those?
If you did see that, the top line, we did get our money from Prairie Dog, forty-three thousand dollars for infrastructure. Didn't have a Prairie Dog's infrastructure, Lauren?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I did take it out of this account and put it in its Prairie Dog account.
That, um do we wanna have Bill order? I don't know. What are those meters now? About three seventy-five?
I have to look through some text messages, but I'm trying to say somewhere around there.
And you're out?
They got one in there that I could use. It was a house that we took out.
I may as well get some order then.
Get you a ten or something.
And I suppose we could put that fire or that curb stop for the care center. Cause that's gonna be what, maybe five, six thousand for that big curb stop?
So that should go under Prairie Dog?
I think it would qualify.
Bill just makes sure you bill them and ask when you order it.
Yeah.
Uh, we paid ball hammers twice on here. Is that just
Now, he just don't check, he doesn't cash his checks, so that's how, this is the one here like that, but it's one, one month and then the next month. So he doesn't cash a check. He went and cashed two at one time.
I just thought he was charging us, gonna talk to him a few times, so.
No. And you'll see the, um, what's the double one for Logan County, that four hundred dollars is because they do all the paperwork for us to get our taxes. Our, our tax money from the residents. So they charge us four hundred dollars a year. Now, our street assessments and all that, you know.
All right. Any other questions on bills? If not, we'll take the motion to approve them?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Date and time of next meeting. How does it always end up on Cinco de Mayo every year?
It's the base of thirty.
To keep it perfect, I think. Cinco, May, I swear, every year it's on, I don't know how that works, huh?
Cinco de Mayo, I mean, he's going somewhere to have some marketing.
Okay, seven P M. Uh, any problems with that as, as of now for anybody? Okay, motion to adjourn. Uh, some move?
Thanks, guys.
All in favor?
Aye.